Thank you, Madam Vice President. Council members, we, myself, and I met with the fire chief. His is the only department that doesn't have a full-time assistant in his position. And when we got our first report from Baker Tilly for this year, it's not as bad as we anticipated. The chief and I were talking about getting an assistant chief, empty chief, what do you want to call him? He came back a couple of days later and told me that what he really needs is middle management.
I'm sorry, what was that, John?
He needs middle management, not upper management.
Okay.
And he came up with a plan, which I thought was an excellent plan, just taking the three captain physicians and moving them to battalion chiefs. They would come off the engine and fill that open seat on the engine with part-time staff. So when there's an incident, major fire or a serious wreck where you have the fire department, who's incident command, they know and work with incident command, and they work together. Fire chief, he's expert at this, but on the fireside, exactly what a battalion chief does. They are busy. They are directing people, calling for resources, telling, you know, which way to come in. And basically, it's like also a safety officer. We've been very fortunate, Justin. Every time I've been out on an incident, he's been there. He's been running the incident command. He can't be there 24/7. We don't expect him to. We don't expect him to stay here in town 24/7. If he's up in Greenwood, or up in Indy, or down in somewhere south, or wherever, or on vacation, they don't have anybody to have an incident command. And it happened here recently down at Montana Mike's. He was on vacation. We had to bring in multiple agencies to assist, and there was no incident command. So nobody really, because the captains, they were in fighting fire, doing their stuff. So Justin came up with this, and I think it's a great plan. It helps the fire department in the middle management. He said, "I'd love to have a full-time assistant chief, but I need more middle management." And I'll let Justin explain about battalion chiefs.
Sorry, I would have presented to you, the night that I presented. Originally, I had my budget, because I was really expecting to be in good, until Scott did kind of present. I had kind of had this plan in motion that I wanted to put out there, that I was trying to be, how was it in the finances and stuff? Our staffing model come about with three on the fire engine and two on the ambulance back around 2020, when chief had us here and kind of built this out. Not really changed our staffing model at all since then. So where we kind of spell our shortfall is the middle management. So the person I have running, you know, the department there right now is the captain that we have on the engine. Well, when he's out doing engine work or gets called to amity for 34 hours on the incident on the fire, we have to pull in anybody to be here to kind of make those critical decisions. When other calls come out, just that they get an incident happen, we either have them embedded in the seat, and that puts them in a bad spot. They can't, they can't be the eyes and ears outside of the scene, being the individual of the heart of the tire cars and all this different stuff. So I really need to, as I present this department forward, which is why I said I do want to take this job with our staffing, our equipment. We really need to put somebody in that position 24 hours a day, 65 days. And if they're 2:00 in the morning, somebody that's going to be able to get there quick, start making decisions, see what resources to need, how to handle this, under fire trucks, ladder trucks, protecting stuff like the alcohol and everything, just a lot of high incident type things, and just a lot of structure, just takes a lot of resources. We always need that eyes and ears outside making those calls. I can't be there all the time. I want to be there as much as I can, and I do, and I'll always still be there as much as I can. But when I go to work, I just worry sometimes, who's going to be there to make sure the incident gets ranked? And we're great, we have need toward partners, and we get some very reliable people coming in from the outside, that's like at Montana Mike's, that's on my watch, that's us. We don't have anybody on the outside looking in, or power lines down, they want to dispose them, and we got it, really shouldn't be in there. We don't have anybody doing that, that's critical for us. So that's why I need, I need middle management. And to do that, I have to take, I need to take like three senior captains for the boss of the engine, then I got back over spots, so that I would be, you know, $22,000 per person, 365, 24/7, is what I would need, which I'm asked to, $92,000, and then the pipeline.
Up 207.
That's what, you know, so that's my request, that's what I would love to have, that's what I think we need to progress in as we look at the industry. Come there, we're not shy, things kind of end down, another trucking company comes in, golf course is going out, I'm confident we're going to get to be seven to nine in a month within the next couple of years. And I mean, our neighborhood providers are doing it, they're happy to see that, but they were ahead of the curve on their, their progressive and their staffing model, and they're already doing this, and it's just, we, as I mentioned, we're obviously, since COVID, we're up about 22% on our call line, so our call line continues to go up, just making ourselves in the safe position to staff correctly, to be safe, to be very robust, for our guys, it was just worth it.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding right, Justin, the three people that you have in mind to fill that are already on staff?
Yeah, I'm not hiring anybody, just my three full-time chapters, my season guys, you just have to.
You're just, you're going to use your season for those and then replace their spots?
Yeah, their spot would just be a part-time, so it would be a part-time spot, and I would fill it in the pool of the 50 people I have. I would make a qualified list of who fills their spot on that truck, I have no problem filling them, so we have plenty of qualified people to do it.
That's great. Because that was a problem with once too.
We'd be hiring anybody new full-time, I would change their job title and the job description, which we do that, and we'll now really start certifying.
Are these people willing to do that? Have you talked to them? They said even?
A hundred percent, yeah. And that's just kind of, the roles they served at Franklin was very similar to that anyway. They filled into the battalion chief's spot, the guys that I have now have their own some kind of process, they were kindly given anyway, so it's not foreign to them at all.
Yeah, they're already qualified to do it, they've done it. I mean, you just can't bring somebody new in, or a three-year veteran, or something like that, and put them in a battalion.
Yeah, and to be honest, we had to get the eight years and stuff in there, that they didn't study on, and they just go more into IT, first, dealing with the fire truck, IT teams, along jet, we spent two days providing more support, depending on what awards.
I think you're right, Justin, is progress is going to move down there to the south and hopefully to the north with that subdivision and all, definitely probably going to have to have all that. And it's great that you got worked out already with Ron and Scott to give you their numbers and all, so.
So their, their budget was increased?
I'm sorry?
From the last meeting, their budget has been increased. Right, I think you said it was, I think it's actually 208 is what their budget went up to cover pay, bike.
Pay, more money in part-time pay than part-time.
Bike and unemployment.
I'm not hiring anybody full-time, unfortunately, I don't have any kids, because if you're two years younger than children, you can't back some part-time hire, we're not hiring anybody at all, I don't have kids for that, but that's kind of my thing. A lot of our departments growing like us, heavily supported by part-time versus more full-time, it's like, we're spending more on full-time. We're being competitive, but you can be very effective part-time, you've got a ton of talent in these people, and you are going to work with them now, people, it's a term of equal, but.
So what did you say in the new budget was that?
It adds 208 to his, his budget is $1,856,000.
That's the correct number?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said.
This is the new. Yeah, but she you have reflects adding.
Adding.
Justin, with your increased calls, have you increased any of the revenue coming in, like from your ambulances or?
When I got here, a couple of years ago, we were bringing in about 230, I think, 230, 240 last year, around about 275. Don't have the exact number now, but I did, usually we're bringing in 25 to 27, and I get some numbers, like in July, we're bringing in 44,000, which is almost double, more of us. So we are seeing a big increase, a lot of it converts back to other than many parts of the green, and stuff like that.
So you are bringing in?
Bringing in, bringing in some good money. They obviously get rough back in our, like the department, which is often the most effective , so we've been applied, the half part of money on that.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have any questions, Mr. Bryant, or Justin?
No, I don't have any questions.
Roger, John, and you. Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, Justin.
And I think the only other change is, you know, fund, we've been receiving money into that since, what was it, 2011, when we started? And we have, there's a balance of about $229,000. We receive about $18,000 annually, so, and that budget could basically, or that money could basically be used for just about anything. We've never had, we've never spent it, we've just let it accumulate, I'm just not talking about that. And so we've added a budget for next year of $200,000 that could be used for some capital expenditures, any equipment replacement or anything, or if we should be made some additional preparations for this year, because I know the street department has a lot of equipment that needs upgraded, and that's, so I'll let John go from here.
Yeah, we just finished getting three quotes for a dump truck and a grappler. Looking at the numbers, we initially were talking about doing one this year and one next year, but after talking to Rhonda and Scott, we can do this year with the aggressive less.
Because we've still got, like, the 345 and the Geo Bond?
Yes.
That has not been.
Yes.
So what were the, what quarters will be about?
One was 250.
I'm going to take that in, and we'll sell it in the future.
Correct.
Approximately 450, and we can use the rest of the Geo Bond money for that, and do some additional appropriations of the recino funds, or if we got the purchase order, then maybe come out the funds, maybe not pay until next year, but I think if we don't pay to do, it's got to be too very, to do additional preparations this year, maybe for the balance on that.
The only thing I would just make sure you do is double-check the bond documents, make sure that those are all, I assume that they can use, can use those things, I can look up the bond, so just make sure, and then double-check the arbitrage, when those dollars have to be spent, to make sure that they're being spent prior to when, if arbitrage starts to hit in, where you start earning interest on those funds, make sure of the arbitrage, make sure it's not going to fall, but you're a lot different, so you want to make sure the bonds are prior to that.
So here for our next council meeting, I'll be coming least with one, if not both.
Oh, with those, those equipment purchases, John?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like that, so the main thing you had going on tonight, then, Rhonda, was Justin's update, the wreck, and then John about the equipment, and then you also had our actual public hearing for the adoption, September the 8th meeting, and actual budget adoption, the 22nd now. Mr. Bryant, this one won't be here that meeting for that adoption, so you'll have to be, we'll have to make sure that all three are here for that.
How does that, if there's not all three, do we have to do another public hearing?
If there's not all three, you should still be okay, because you're adopting early enough, you still have time, even if you had to have another public hearing, you still have that time. So advertise that, and if there is, you shouldn't, you have all three, you should be good, and that's it. Neighbors will come up, so.
So just three need to be here?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And everybody has to be in a certain vote, so.
They don't have to be all three, just like, so, yeah, the actual hearing for the 8th then, sounds like they, more likely to be here, but it would be the actual adoption on the 22nd that they said they're on the, they would be, so.
And Scott does have a presentation for the updated cash flow, is still good?
Yeah, I think Robert provided you those cash flows, and just kind of updated you on what those will find out at the, the fire department, and so the first email, three words of cash flow, right? So I think you have faced this one through four, the first few are just the remainder of 2025, there shouldn't have been anything that changed on that, so I will probably just do that. Look at this, three or four, that'll be used over the 2026. So if you look at the federal line, which is the first column there, you will see that we have total budget receipts at $5.29 million, with the addition of the fire department differential total budget, first, the federal line, to just over $6.44,000, $21,000. So that does put you at a deficit of $850,000. What that means is without additional revenue, you will eat into your cash balance by $850,000 in 2026. So with the estimates for the remainder of 2025, and if it's spending the entire budget for 2026, you would be looking at an estimated income of $3.4 million, $3.2 million, which puts you at an operating balance of $52.6 million. That is fairly right at the ideal cash reserve level, but if that deficit continues to cover the next few years, you need to have cash balance, and that operating percentage will go very quickly, probably three years, you would start possibly negative, again, all this consuming, spending all of that budget. So if you get to the end of the year next year, and you see that expenses are coming in higher than you planned, or maybe revenues are coming in less, or changes in the legislature, that would be the time to force correct and say, maybe we can do this, maybe we need to cut back, do some reductions, appropriations, there is $277,000 in capital outlays if you were doing that, so I wouldn't typically consider that an operating expense. I know sometimes this can be recurring, because you have place cards that you replace on other regular places, or vehicles you replace, but that's, so sometimes they do become recurring, but obviously capital outlays are the easiest things to cut. So if you take the $277,000 out of that, you're at about $500,000 deficit, which is pretty standard for what Edinburgh is budgeting, just from high experience in the past, and it was always a little bit of a deficit that Edinburgh is budgeting that, typically either supplemental distribution, we're going to split, or we just wouldn't spend the entire budget, and everything's scattered whole again. One thing to note is the supplemental distributions that were kind of, you know, sometimes they were being highest, 250, maybe even higher than that, $500,000 supplemental distribution, which is revenue, they really don't count on at all, those aren't completely going away with the new legislature, so you won't be giving those supplemental distributions very well. So with that, the rest of the cash flows throughout this, it shouldn't have changed except for the received, so the kind of email, and it's not really much of cash flow, we just bring in $200,000 in capital outlays, but I just wanted to show you that that would bring your end of balance at the end of 2026 to $56,200, $21,000. So you don't really need to keep an operating balance in that fund, it's not an operating fund, it's just going to be used for capital, so you really could spend that all the way down to zero, if you want it, but I would recommend keeping a little bit of reserve in that case, there's some sort of unexpected expense, so I can have a little bit of that little bit of exit. That being said, you also have $2.2 million currently in the ready day fund. I don't know what the house of accountability is, but that, you can always make a transfer every year at very least, if you play it, as well, I think that's happened over the last few years, I believe that, I want to say $400,000, is it maybe last year?
I believe so.
So that the ready day balance is kind of a management decision of what your accountability is for a balance in that, that fund, and it's 2.2. When I was here, you know, I wanted it to be between 1 and 2 million, I get some kinds of change now, so how do you go higher, better, I think simply the eligibility to cover, so 2.2 is probably a good operating, or a good balance to have in there. That's all I have with cash flows. I will say that today, prior to this meeting, I did go in and look at net asset values to see if those have been posted yet. They've been posted for Johnson County, and then with Johnson County, Shelby County did not post it yet, so with the, it looks like a 200% so far. So Johnson County's net asset value went from $134 million to $150 million, so Johnson County's NAP increased by 11.5%, so that actually, other than the higher debt net asset value, it's going to lower that factor. Our County County had a lower increase, but it did go up, but only increased by 1.5%, which is kind of what we're expecting to see in net asset values, that smaller version, and hopefully not possibly turning down. My guess, maybe there was some development in Johnson County, it may have been a roll-off that increases that, that, so. Shelby County did not in yet, but if it were to come in the same as it was last year, which I highly doubt it is, because you know that there's development happening in Shelby County, so it should also increase, but if it were to come in the same as it was last year, you would be looking at a total net asset value of $243 million, which would be about 7.35% increase from last year's net asset value, which, again, as the net asset value goes up, the tax rates are going to go down, assuming that you work, work portion from the lower than the net asset value, the proportion having capped at 4% again. So since you're increasing net asset value, it should go 4% of the proportion for your actual, so. Now, all that being said, those things, those can change, there can be appeals, they can still change those, they find out if there's any errors, they typically don't change very much once they certify those net asset values. I could see some more changes, I know we have a lot of issues, particularly for locations this year, because we can do legislature, a lot of the 2% deductions are being calculated correctly, so we have a lot of backlogs, different software systems, trying to do this, calculate correctly, so don't be surprised if you do see some adjustments to that in the next couple, upcoming months, but I don't think that they'll drop drastically. So good news on the end of the month, but it is still increasing for now, and a relatively large increase, and I do expect that Shelby County will increase with the development of the capital, and I would assume that some of the houses that have been there a couple of years now, will start rolling months ago, so, Shelby County NAP should be able to increase, at least for a few years, just based on the new development of the tax, so it should be able to outgrow any decline that would happen due to the new legislature. Other than that, Rhonda, I don't think I have anything else, Mr. Bryant, or you want to go first?
I was just going to mention to them, like, when we were talking earlier about the IT, the CCDF, there isn't enough cash in there to pay both of those bills, if you want the CCDF to pay the entirety of both of those, and then the amount, you should have what I gave you tonight, there's a little spreadsheet that shows the breakdown of the monthly cost. What then also charges us is a managed service seat, a managed server, and a system backup, and then they charge us for a router for each location, and then the office 365 we already had, and the email we already had, so I took the tax-funded departments and pulled out their annual cost, and it's about $38,000 that could be paid annually out of CCDF rather than being paid out of their budgets. So if that's the route you want, you want us to go, we can do that, and then if we do that, though, that's about the amount that we receive in annually, so that, that balance will not be increasing unless we, can you touch on the updating the CCDF to 5%?
Yeah, and I did actually, I did calculate that based on the net asset value that we have, if we were to reestablish your CCD fund, the CCD rate is currently at 2.3, right? 2.3 around there. You can increase that to up to 5 cents. So what that CCD fund, capital development fund is, is outside of your normal maximum limit, so it is simply going to take that rate times the net asset value, and that's going to come up with a dollar amount that you can generate. This year, I think we have planned on it to be around $55,000. If you were to reestablish at the 5 cent, it would bring in $21,000, so about $7,000 increase.
5 cents on what?
Well, that, that 5 cents for $100 net asset value, so it would essentially be 5 cents additional on the, on the, on the tax rate, but it would be 2.7 additional, because you're already at 2.3. So like I said, that is outside of the maximum limit, so it is money that is drawn in that is not inside of the levy that's grown by the court. The other quick thing, I don't think we've mentioned, we lift that, that must be now, they did send those to Rhonda, you can lift that much for 2026, for the Department of Public Health and Finance, for 2026, Edinburgh's estimate for certified shares was 2.7 million, an increase of about $91,000 from the prior year, Edit, 517,000, an increase of 45,000 increase this year, and Public Safety, $8,335,000 increase, so the last year, it was about $100,000 code. The main increase in the, within the three counties was from Shelby County, which is going to extend to some populations to Shelby County, by the end of, so, but, so, the tax would be relevant, hasn't, pretty much more populated. Anything else?
Just other than, with that, that will be going away?
Yeah, we have to lift, again, just to reiterate for this probably thousands of times, that certified shares, the Edit, and the Public Safety, will all be going away to the end of 2027. During 2027, we'd be willing to establish your municipal lift, up to 1.2%. It is possible, we had a discussion last Friday, it was, it's possible that 1.2% may not replace what the counties currently bringing in. So currently, between all three certified shares, the Edit and Public Safety, it's about $3 million that we're going to be paying. Currently, that is based on the county's adjusted personal income, and it's dispersed, and I've never been able to, that is by population, or by the level, but I believe it's by population.
It's by population.
So currently, you're bringing in a value based on the county's adjusted personal income. When you go to the municipal lift, it will be based on just the adjusted personal income of Edinburgh Reserve, which is in county, so it is possible that your adjusted personal income could go low enough that even increases the rate will not bring in enough offset while you're going to lose. Again, that is a bit enough, so we'd have to, it's a bit complex based on the different counties, but, you know, it's, we know, I feel that the adjusted personal income of Edinburgh is going to be lower than the adjusted personal income of the whole county. If that's the case, you do run that risk of not being able to really, so you have to either press expenses or find another, you will also, if any of the counties adopt, maybe, oh, not, sorry, it's not, it's higher than the mess, that can be up to 0.4%. Unfortunately, that. A portion of that would come to Edinburgh, which is a requiring provider, maybe to those counties. So if all of those counties adopted, you will get portions of that counties. That's up to the county to decide whether or not they need it, but you will get, you have to get a share of that, and if faced on population and coverage, where again, it's a kind of complicated calculation, but you will receive that, receive some of that, get paid through adoption.
So, and we def, I definitely need to think about in, in the 26th, start of 27, possibly having Baker City do a study to find out what is, how is it when that back goes?
Yeah, mostly the, the DLG is supposed to be, revenue is supposed to be providing adjusted gross income numbers for all municipalities, they don't currently keep that. I don't know if it's in their system, and they just have to figure out a way to pull it out of the system, or if they have to reach out the way to have a new system, because currently, based on the legislature now, they only have those down at county. So now, when you look at your paycheck, you live in Edinburgh, you're going to have a different local income tax rate than someone who lives in unincorporated Edinburgh, which is what the county produces, because those people, if they're county, if they're firing the mess, they could possibly pay an omnimunicipal lift, but if you live in Edinburgh, you're going to pay all of those, that's an omnimunicipal, but also the municipal, so your tax rate would be different than someone who lives in unincorporated, or someone who lives in Franklin and has, you know, if Franklin adopts 0.6% and Edinburgh adopts 0.2%, then they would have to, so it's no longer county specific. So we'll also have to look at more burden on payroll, whoever does your payroll, I'm sure, I think that's the now, so there will be more local income tax rates. Right now, there's 92 local income tax rates that you may have to deal with, and that's obviously one of the, so you have to, there is, I want to, there is.
So we're saying that our property taxes are going to go up?
What that?
So what you're saying is our taxes are going to go up?
Uh, I can't say that for sure, your property taxes are most likely going to go down based on the legislature. However, probably will be offset with local income tax for most units, because most units have, I think all counties in Indiana have some sort of local income tax, all counties. And at this point, I don't know that there's a municipality or a county that can survive without the local income tax that they generated and, you know, thrown to use. So, I mean, I can't say what each individual person is going to see between property tax and local income tax, because that's why, that's why we're going to parcel by parcel data analysis to try to see all of these different taxes and things like that, but I mean, it is very possible that your property tax goes down and then the local income tax just goes up higher than the property tax went down, so it's going to be on the beginning of this.
It's going to be, a property tax goes down when your paycheck goes down? With an added local income tax?
Yeah, so right now, in Johnson County, I believe you're going to be paying a 1.45% local income tax. If you live in Johnson County, you're paying 1.45%. When you do legislature, that could go as high as 2.9%, and that 2.9% is per taxpayer. So if you live in Edinburgh, the county adopts 1.2, and the county adopts 1.2, that's up to actually 2.4, there without any other addition possible. It's possible that there, you know, we have worked with some counties that don't need the whole 1.2%, they have wells below local income tax right now, and the amount of 1.2% will bring in, which is the actual number that we're looking for. Again, all counties are going to be different based on their, you know, more rural, more rural counties, getting there than how, lower adjusted gross income, so that's where they have to have a rate. And Edinburgh, well, if it's in that zone, that's counties, Edinburgh itself and local rural, maybe, and your, so relatively easy for us to get to the adjusted gross income in the county, because we know two of the factors, either rate, or the amount of distribution that we can back in, what we give to the adjusted gross income, but there's not any way for us to back these municipalities, adjusted gross income, that we can, we can data, it's going to be all part, especially, you know.
Thank you. And then another thing to consider, our Johnson County edit resolution expires in October of this year, and it will be, need to be renewed in October. Currently, those edit funds are used for downtown revitalization and salaries for the economic development director and planning director. So at some point in time, those two salaries will, once this edit fund goes away, those will have to be brought back into the general fund, so.
I was going to like, can I say?
So, I'm going to, you know, I put a copy of the ordinance in there, if you want, the resolution, if you want to look at that and let me know if there's, if that's what you want to do again, is the resolution to be for the same uses, or if you want to add any uses to it, just, just let me know, and we'll, we'll bring it back in October when it's time to renew.
And then one thing for Edinburgh is that they, you have to become reliant on your economic development in your public safety place. They've been using for capitalists, which are not necessarily profitable. So some units, we see the other police officers in the public safety lift, or firefighters or operational, so a lot of that happens to those operational, that's called a big thing, but it would kind of have to be absorbed in the central fund. So ideally, you have municipal lift to offset it in order to cover those higher expenses. But since you're not overly relying on it at this point, that does save a little bit of the $3 million that you're bringing in, approximately $50,000 that there is going to save you there. So really, in order to, it's 2.5 million that you're going to need to offset, you know, the fact that you would infer operational repair fund, the certified share is already going to the general fund, the other taxes going to different funds, and have it stored in the operations. So that's one benefit, is that it gives them plenty of uses for operational.
I think the last thing that I have was, one of the ways that Scott and I had talked about to offset some of the loss is the pilot, the payment rule of taxes, where the electric water and sewer pay, give us so much every year, because they don't pay taxes, then they give us, out of their revenues, a dollar amount to help offset the loss. But in order to do that, it's another study to figure out what each one of them can, can afford.
And it's basically based on the assets of companies that we get, how the taxes come in, if they're private, so if you bet, private electric company that owns all of those assets, that got their highest power, they would pay property taxes on those, they would pay different taxes that would eventually come to account of. So a study, we did do a part of that in 2026, so we, 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 year, because it became unnecessary based on revenue, you know, when you're doing it again. But that would, there would be a study done, wanting to see what, like you said, almost what private energy is paying, and what would be sold, because it doesn't have to be the whole amount of what, you know, would be paid by a private entity or corporation, but I believe there does have to be some sort of, that study could change this all part of the, so, so originally, it would be, it would probably be, definitely.
Yeah, I definitely, I agree, that, that has to be done.
Yeah, we can't just grab a number all the year.
So we'd be looking at both the first study and that municipal, two different studies next year, then, right?
Yeah, probably start of.
To prepare for 27.
And honestly, with the complexity, I mean, I don't want to turn away, but with the complexity of Edinburgh's lending office, it would be much easier to do the department of revenue has to do with, the president's trust trying to fall apart something, instead of state up from three different counties and hoping that it's accurate. Obviously, when we do those things, we compare them to the known numbers, which is counties, you know, do that, there's always going to be a variance, so we hope that we can, if close is what the county can do, but it's got to be much more accurate, if we can, if we have to do that, do that, that's, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Now, if it gets to 2027, and they have early, the numbers, then obviously.
We're going to be a little nervous, yeah, we're going to be nervous.
Hopefully, I, I thought they were going to have them this year, but I haven't really heard anything, but at the very beginning, we're just going to have, I thought they said they had two counties, and they never believed that they just like.
That's the point I've got, did you guys have any, any questions, did you want?
Scott's actually answered, I mean, pretty much everything I would have asked, did you have a follow-up? Council, I want to remind you that this is, this is the last workshop, so to speak, so those questions, I'm sitting back.
Yeah, I guess the one thing to get mentioned this year, the form three, but I have to be, I have to.
Yeah, you have to have a vice partner.
It's already prepared, everything's done on our end, they will go through the part to review, to make sure everything's in order, and then once the department, whoever, that is ready to submit, we did the whole, and I actually all of your day away, it's completed, so we have different changes, so even the adopted, I'll go again at this point, there could still be changes, all the way up to adoption, like when you go to 16, then it goes to that, but once we get all that, we'll be able to, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be
Scott, what was the average that the town did not spend, Mr. Press?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that, I would say, probably it's been 90, because it seems like that $400,000 transfer during the day was pretty common, and with the budget, when I was here, between $400,000 and $500,000, that would be about 10% of that. My guess would be the name, would be one direction.
Any other questions, anyone? I have, just actually clues the budget portion of it, I do have an option on it for other business, any, anyone else? Julie, gentlemen? Okay? So if that's the case, if there's another discussion, I could entertain a motion for a gentleman.
I'll sit to Julie.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ma'am.